Twenty-four, a lot of the key numbers in the report. And then put the four prior year numbers or from the audit reports there beside it because nobody wants to go home and pull out all these audit reports. So that you get a feel for trend information and not just a number with no context around it. You can see total fund balance there in your general fund at 269 million. When you look, you go back to 2020 where that's 117. Unavailable fund balance at 30.5, other restricted at 36.4, and then general fund expenditures at 332. Fund balance available as a percentage at 71.77 percent. And then revenues over non-expenses before transfers. The general fund was a positive 29.8. Water fund was 3.50 positive. Waste water was a positive 3.8. Water district operating funds a positive 8.1 and solid waste 535,000. You see your total fixed assets there from your enterprise funds with accumulated depreciation and cash. And then without reading all these numbers, what we attempt to do is show the cash by fund with the associated investment earnings. So just to show cash at 247 and then had investment earnings of 12.8. You see all the other ones right there. Then you skip down, you see the fund balance again in your general fund and then the school bond fund at 9.9 million. The ARPA fund still has 3.3 million. Water fund at 72.6 million. And then the wastewater fund at 136. Those last two, when you look at fund balance on those, it's really not consequential. What you're trying to achieve there is cash flow because you're providing a service to the citizens. You want it to cash flow and pay for itself. And so you have no intention of reselling that, et cetera. You're not going to use those fixed assets. What you want to do is pay for itself. And then you see your property tax rates for all five years along with the collection percentage, which we're always impressed with at 99.92 percent. If anybody ever asks us how to do better, we tell them to call Johnston County. Total property valuation and total levy amount. So kudos to all the folks in the tax department. They do a great job. And I was once told here, the citizens do a great job of paying their taxes. So they're the really ones who deserve kudos. On the top of page five, you see the debt there by governmental and by business type activities. Total governmental at 280.9 million. Total business type activity at 386 million. You can see on the bottom of that same page five, there's a, they're called limited obligation bonds, which means they get technically double counted when you start putting them in the notes. So the real outstanding debt's 337 million. In the next section, so total debt outstanding, not with what I've just said on the 48.9 million is 667 million. So interesting take, you go back to 2020, that same number's 415. So a lot of projects, a lot of stuff going on in the county. And you break down your general fund revenues there, you see a total of 352 million. You go back to 2020 where that number's 265. And then a breakdown of your general fund expenditures at $322 million. And on page six, on that bar chart on the top, you see a nice trend upward on your total fund balance. In blue, the red is the restricted and assigned. On the bottom, you see the percentage of unassigned fund balance there along with the group weighted average comparison. And then on page seven, you see your cash balances and fund balances there in pie charts at the top with the respective numbers right underneath that for each, the cash balances and fund balances in total. And realizing some of those cash balances and some of those fund balances have restrictions on them as well. And then on page eight, as we mentioned, collection percentages for property taxes at 99.92 percent. We don't do anybody close to that. And we do 27 other 100 counties in the state. So this is kudos to everybody.
Excuse me, Alan. When you say group weighted average, what group?
It used to have more meaning, so I apologize for that. The LGC, I think in '22 or '21, I can't remember, so I apologize for that, would group them by the closest 10 counties to you population wise. So you had 10 groups. After that year, whether it was '21 or '22, they just decided to do everybody above 100 million in budget and everybody below 100 million in budget. So that group weighted average doesn't quite have the comparison that it once did.
Good, thank you.
And then on page nine, you see your debt analysis there and the governmental funds, the percent the school debt is of the total debt and then school debt of governmental debt and then school debt as a percentage of total debt. And then on the bottom, you see the breakdown of your general revenue by percentage. And at 4.3 percent, you can see why we spend so much time talking about ad valorem taxes because whether it's the valuation, the levy, or the collection percentages, they play a big part in the overall funding of the county. Then on page 10, you see a breakdown of your general funding expenditures there with education, public safety, debt service being big parts, human services being big parts of what's going on there. And then the only other comment, the, I'm sure Chad will respond and you'll have to sign. The LGC is extending the deadline across the board because it's like this year, there was an issue with Medicaid compliance confirmations getting out. So that's one of the reasons I'm here in February rather than January. With that being said, though, I'm happy to answer questions you've got of me, not just today, but anytime. You've got a question, call my office if I happen not to be in, tell them to give you my cell number, and I'll get you an answer to your question. And we thank you for allowing us to do the audit for the county.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
And obviously, both those documents will be available on the website at some point in the near future. Okay, all right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda, and before that, I know we have Ken Starling, who's the chairman of our Airport Authority. Did you want to make an introduction before we move on to the, to the next one?
And the next item is rehabilitate taxi lines and construction of bypass and hold apron at the airport. But I thought this was appropriate time for an introduction here.
Morning Chairman.
Morning.
Ken Starling, instead of Chairman of the Airport Authority. We've definitely been going through some transitions at the airport. We have gone through a hiring process. We have a new director. I think he's familiar to all of you. We introduced him, I believe, before. He's been doing a great job. He hit the ground running. I actually have to tell him, take off. He's been working Saturdays and Sundays and just around the clock. So been doing a great job, getting us a different perspective. He's got a little bit of an update on a few things that we've got, so I'll turn it over to Mr. David Harris.
All right. Well, welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
In my Navy career, I would have said that seeing the bosses twice in one month was a bad thing. I'm hoping here it's actually a good thing. But yes, good morning. And interesting, and I'll be brief as I can because I know we have a lot to get to, but the State Department of Transportation just came out with their economic impact study for airports in general across the state. And a couple of the key figures, and I'll make these available to you all, it's $88 billion impact for aviation in North Carolina on its own, 427,000 jobs supported by aviation. More importantly, they also produced one that's specific to Johnston and regional airports, so more important to us. 20.9 million in tax revenue, 317.8 million in economic impact overall, and 1,385 jobs supported with 148 based aircraft. What's more important, which will lead to this topic, is we are sometimes the third, sometimes the fourth busiest airport in North Carolina without a control tower and without commercial service operations. So the only people that are outperforming this small, single runway airport in North Carolina and Johnston County are Charlotte, Raleigh, and sometimes Greensboro. But we outperform them on occasions as we bounce back and forth. So as we talk about that and preserving our assets, that's what leads us to this. With those types of operations, we're wearing out our assets quickly, as you can imagine. Looking at other data points that I pulled for the last couple of years to look at how the airport operates and how it functions is, in just the last three years, we've had a over 50 percent increase in operations on the airport. So we went from roughly the same as our contemporaries to 50 percent beyond any of our contemporary airports across the state. And what that will lead to is a breakdown of our facilities. So when we talk about the rehab of the taxiways and everything else, in order to support that economic impact that we, that the airport brings to the county, we've got to preserve our assets out there. And what the engineers have told me, because I'm not an engineer, even though I went to NC State, go wolf back tonight, but anyways, the, is that $1 invested in repair and rehab today is saving us $4 in costs in the future as pavement will break down exponentially over the years. So as it hits a certain point, it's time to go. And so that's the point of this work that we're doing here with rehabbing the pavement itself. The other piece of it is the operational efficiency. As we went up 50 percent in operations, it's getting very crowded on the airport. And two of those pieces is adding a means by which we can move aircraft around more safely and efficiently on the airport to support those increased operations as we go. And then the last one I'll bring up is that you'll, there's been a lot of publicity about the tower and the need for air traffic control tower out there. And it's warranted based on the data we've seen and the discussions we're having here today. So any questions for me?
Any questions?
Did you say 88 million or billion?
For, for the state, it's 88 billion.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And again, for the specific asks for today is?
Is just approving the budget for the execution of the rehabilitation of those taxiways and out there.
All right. Not hearing any questions, so hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the capital project budget for the rehabilitate the taxi lanes and construction of bypass and hold apron.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Again, welcome. Look forward to your work.
Yeah.
I think those of us, I was going to say, those of you that met you had no doubt that you were going to hit the ground running and stay that way.
Well, I'm working with great folks and it's a lot of fun. What better job than to play with airplanes?
Based on all those stats, it's no wonder you're working Saturdays and Sundays now with.
And that's the, the point that I figured out real quickly was, we transitioned from being a five day a week airport to a seven day a week airport over the last about six months. Some of the operators out there opened up their window to Saturdays and Sundays, which now, when you look at our operational data, we're identical seven days a week.
Wow, thank you.
How long will it take to do the construction for the hold apron and the bypass? How long will that process take?
They're estimating it'll be about a year if all the funding was in place and we can go from there.
I understand, I understand. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service to our country and now to the folks in Johnston County.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Chad McClan will present a resolution providing the issuance of $100 million school bonds series in 2025.
I'm going to actually have Martha come up and do that for me. But before she does, if you don't mind, could the board, can we make a motion and the board approve the audit presentation? That wasn't done and we kind of need to do that.
Okay, that's my fault.
No, it's okay. No worries.
All right. So let's go back and.
Our great attorney called that. I didn't catch it either.
Second. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Now, we're back. Thank you for straightening, straightening this out.
Yep.
Good morning. You have in your agenda package a resolution that we're asking you to consider that will give us staff the authority to move forward with selling 100 million general obligation school bonds. We have a sale date with the LGC in March 4. And these bonds are actually from the 2022 referendum, not the most recent one. But we'd like for you to consider the resolution and the capital project ordinance.
All right. Any questions from Martha?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution and capital project ordinance as outlined above.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Before we move on, Chad, would you mind coming back up? I know there's, there was a, a question or brought up during public comment about the $30 million that we approved a month or so ago. So can you kind of go through what that 30 million was for?
Yes, that was continued, so we went and stopped construction projects that the Johnston County schools had going on. We're advancing that money and then when we sell the 100 million in bonds, we get reimbursed for that. So that comes out of that bond. So we're affording that money and then we get reimbursed when we sell it in March.
Okay.
For school projects that they have going on because those, those projects are going faster than what we, than what they have the authority to spend. So we're going ahead and front that money before, because we don't set, we haven't sold the bonds yet. So we're affording that money so they don't stop construction and we get it back when we sell those bonds.
Okay. I thought that was the case, but I wasn't sure. But I just wanted to make sure we confirm that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess you don't go anywhere, Ian.
Yeah.
You're going to work for the financial update.
Yes, sir. So I was going to give a brief financial update. You know, we had the audit that was just presented and that, that took us through June 30, 2024. And I'm going to provide an update. And I've put these 11 by 17 sheets in front of you. One, because it's better to read. Number two, I can't read it if I don't have it in big print. So this, what I'm going to do is I'm going to catch you up through December 31st. Because of the timing, I don't have, we're not quite ready to have everything through January 31st. But from a big, high level standpoint, the finances so far are tracking the way we budgeted, the way you all budgeted. Ad valorem taxes are going, are going well. Collections, as you've heard our auditors say, is top notch, the best in the state, one of the best in the country. People continuing to spend money in Johnston County. Sales tax has leveled off the last couple of years, but I think it's trending back in, into a positive direction. We had a disbursement notification today that was $500,000 more than I thought it was going to be for the month of February and for, as far as budget, and 300,000 more than it was this time last year. So that's trending up. Investment income is still trending up. We're doing some things that's with taxpayer money to make sure that we're investing wisely and getting as much bang for our buck on that. One of the things you can tell about the economy in Johnston County is how planning inspections revenue, revenues are going and what we budgeted for is about 20 percent higher than what we budgeted for in terms of revenue. So there's still a lot of planning and zoning and construction going on in Johnston County. Still lottery education funding is well. We just got our disbursement for 1.1 million. So the revenues coming into Johnston County is how this board foresaw and what you voted on. The expenditures, we continued, we budgeted an $18 million fund balance, but as always, our employees, department heads are working efficiently and effectively to make sure that we don't, that we're spending taxpayer money wisely. So in light of the $18 million fund balance designation that you all voted for, we anticipate maybe only using, maybe breaking even or using just a little bit of that fund balance. And that's how our, our employees are doing every day on the job, making sure we're, we're operating efficiently to serve taxpayers. Our debt service this year is, what we anticipate is a little bit over $40 million for this year, which is in the general fund, all the debt that we owe, we pay it off very quickly inside of 20 years because things may, as, as we, as we grow and we have infrastructure needs, it's important to pay stuff off quickly so that we can meet the needs that we have from a Johnston County standpoint or for community college, for the Johnston County schools. And so we're projected to spend about $18 million less than what the board approved this $376 million budget. We're projected to spend around 358 million. And we're, I project, so the fund balance at the last audit that was presented was 71.77. I project in the low 60s, around 61 percent at the end of this year. And there's, you know, some of the reasons for that is, well, I want to touch on the reasons some of that is, the way it is, is since the last revow, this board has reduced the tax rate 11 pennies. We, we did it in 19, in fiscal year 20, we did it by two pennies in fiscal year 20. In fiscal year 22, we did another three pennies. In '24, we did it four pennies. And then this year that we're in now, we reduced it another two pennies. And right now, the value of a penny is right at just a little bit above $3 million. And so doing some of that takes our fund balance down a little bit, which is fine. And it's positioned us well for the future. The other thing I wanted to real briefly comment on is the reasons why we have the fund balance that we have, I know it was 71, now it's, now I'm projecting 61, is you know, the county accesses the bank for not only the county, but all of our constituents that we, that we, and all of our partners. So something goes haywire and breaks or roof blows off, they come to the county and we, we fund that. So we need to have the fund balance to be able to meet any needs that any of our partners have and that may arise. You know, a few years ago, with a hurricane flooded our wastewater treatment plant, I went out there and toured it and, you know, with reimbursements for insurance and we all know about FEMA, the county had to stroke a check for $4 million to get that thing back online. So it's those type of things that we need to have fund balance for to be able to continue the county operating so that our, to hopefully our citizens won't see a service interruption. Rating agencies require healthy fund balance. And so when they look at us in the county, they look at our financial viability, the stable, the stable finances that we have, they require us to have a nice and healthy fund balance. We just received our AAA rating and because we're rated so high over the last, you know, we've just been AAA, but we've been rated very high over the last 10 or 20 years, it saved the county taxpayers tens of millions of dollars in interest. Not only from when we go out and we, we sell bonds or we refinance bonds to get lower interest rates. We've seen the interest rates as low as in the mid-ones. And right now, we're, we may sell bonds and we may get something in the mid-3s. When we know how interest rates are high, we're able to get in the mid-3s. And that saves tens of millions of dollars when we're talking about the dollars that we're having now. And so that's one, that's another reason why we do what we do. And then, you know, as I touched on before, you know, the county and our partners may have infrastructure needs. And so much like if you go and you need to buy a vehicle and you need to make a down payment, you have to save for that down payment. A lot of people just don't have the money to put money down for a down payment. We have to have money set aside so that we can meet these huge infrastructure needs as a growing county, the county we are. And so we have to have that money to be able to pay debt service and to provide the needs that not only our county employees may need to meet the needs of our citizens, but for the community college, for the school system and anybody else that might need some money to, to meet their infrastructure needs to serve citizens. So those are some of the big reasons why we have the fund balance that we have. Y'all have done a good job, a great job. And I know we've got revow coming up and you'll make great decisions on that as well. But those are the reasons why we have to have the fund balance we have and why we are, why we are where we are and how we're set up for the future. And I, if there's anything I can touch on in terms of the finances that you may have questions about, I'm happy to answer it.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, if that's all right.
Sure.
Mr. McClan, I just want to thank you for your financial leadership and your team does just an extraordinary job. There's never a time that I can dream up a question that you don't have an answer to or you can get it within about five minutes. So I really appreciate that. And I think that's largely one of the reasons that our county rates so high in the financial stewardship and the things that we do. And I'm just very grateful for your, your leadership in that. And your entire staff does an extraordinary job. Thank you.
Yeah, we got two of the superstars here with Martha and Kathy. They make, they make it go back there in the back. So anything I talk about, they've had their hands in it. And we're going for another, I don't know how many years in a row, we're going for another financial award. So we've been getting them since, I think, '09 or '10. And so we've had a financial award every year. So we're looking to do that again in our audit reports. It's a testament to Martha and Kathy and our whole staff and what they do. And then all of our employees, Rick and Jennifer, all of our employees that contribute to everything that we do.
It's appreciated.
Thank you. Yeah. I would just say that as we have the, the two priorities, the financial stewardship and then again, the county employees that get it done. Thank you again. Thank you. And I know it works from the department heads all the way up and, and all the way back down. So thanks to all the, the county employees for making, making the financial stewardship a success and the success it's been for, for many years.
And we have to have the fund balance and the things that we do to be able to meet those six board priorities. So this is, this plays into a part. It's like having an offensive line on a football team. When you don't hear anything from them, they're doing a good job. You guys are making it happen behind the scenes to make sure that our employees can do what they need to do for citizens. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have here today, the Chairman of the Johnston County Public School Board, Lynn Andrews, and she has Brooks Moore, who I believe is the facilities manager. I don't know what his title is, but he's here too saying.
Yeah, I also have Dr. Bracy here with superintendent.
Oh, that's right. He came in there. He's here.
Chairman Lauder, Vice Chair Harris, the rest of you, it's good to see some of the new faces here. I am honored always to stand before you. And we stand before you as the proud school system that ranks 35th in the state of North Carolina in academic performance. And we, but we're not satisfied with that, are we, Dr. Bracy? No, we, we've already had some discussions about that. As you are well aware, we're, I'm here today to talk about Clayton High, but before I do that, I just want to remind all of us that if you ride down Cleveland Road, you're going to see a beautiful Swift Creek Elementary School that's going up quickly. If you go down Tauton Farm Road, you're going to see Wilkes Mills High School going up, returning a high school to a community, how excited they are. If you ride over to Cooper Academy, you're going to see a new building that will be finished next fall. Will open next fall. Swift Creek will open next fall. Also, if you ride out to Cleveland High School, because of your generosity with the taxpayers' dollars, you'll see a 24 edition classroom on there that will open in the fall as well. So a lot going on as, as has been stated already, and all of it due to your commitment to our school system, of which we're very glad. I'm also very appreciative of you passing the resolution to help continue to put this money out so we can go ahead and finish these projects. Because you can see, we have a lot of projects going on in Johnston County right now. And we, we just appreciate your commitment to our school system. The reason I'm here today is to talk about the rebuild. We call it the rebuild of Clayton High School. And I've got Brooks Moore here who's going to talk to you more about it. Our intention has been, we, after our study was done, he could tell you more about that, was to try to relocate Clayton High School's new building on their current campus. This is a community school. They want to keep their school there. And it has presented some challenges, but I think we've worked our way through that. We, this past Wednesday, we held interviews of design companies, Mr. Harris, Mr. Lauder, Mr. Stovall, appreciate y'all coming to that. I think you enjoyed it. You were a valuable part of this, this, this whole process. On Tuesday night, we have our regular board meeting. We will vote on the design, design company. The board will choose which design company we're going to go with. And then we'll be back in touch with you as we enter into a contract with the design company that's selected. So again, I just stand before you as just an honored member of our Board of Education. On behalf of that, thank you for your continued commitment to our school system. So I'm going to ask Mr. Moore if he will come up here. And I think he has some more information, unless you have any questions.
So Lynn, did you, so not tomorrow, but the next Tuesday or is it tomorrow?
Next Tuesday.
Okay, next Tuesday.
We meet the second Tuesday. We'll vote on, the 11th.
Okay.
And then we'll be back in touch with you if that's okay.
Okay. That's great. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And staff, good morning as well. Clayton High School was originally built in 1950, 75 years ago. fifty, seventy-five years ago. And since then, numerous buildings have been added as well to support the growing needs of that campus. That is now home to just under two thousand students. The steel frame masonry buildings are certainly, are certainly showing signs of their age with cracking walls and all of that. But more importantly, is the interior and exterior components, the windows, the roofs, the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, the plumbing, and especially the life safety systems that are grandfathered to current building codes. But then, those systems have all well exceeded their life, life expectancies, and, and carry a very high facility condition index. So, what we call a FCI is a term that is, compares the cost of repairs to the cost of replacement. And so, a new school would carry a zero because it's new. But the worst is the one. Clayton High carries a point seven seven, which in sixty percent and above is considered critical. So, that, that is a significant index score. So, my charge is, Ms. Andrews said, was can we build a new Clayton High School while maintaining the current students in that school? Don't swing them. Don't put mobile village out, out, out there. Keep them in the current school. So, a feasibility study was, was conducted and determined that that is possible. There's actually a good amount of real estate on the northern, northern portion of that campus, up towards the tennis courts, practice fields, fields and all. So, we can construct a nice new school up in that, that area. And with the sloping topography of that campus, once it's done, you, you can ride by on seventy and see the stadium, and see a nice, beautiful new school sitting up, up there. The, the students, the staff, and the greater Clayton community, and also the county can, can, can be proud, proud of and call home. So, but, there's always a but from, it's not going to be easy. We have met twice with the town of Clayton, about fifteen different people from their lead leadership team, from the town manager down. There are currently twenty-three electrical meters on that site. So, there's service, twenty-three services to that site. So, our goal is to start new, bring in completely new services of electric, water, sewer, all of that to, to a new, new school. And the plan that we're looking at will construct that new school and separate it from the current, current school. So, we are looking at about a three, three years of construction, about a year of design. We're, we're going to use the design build, delivery, which, which, which allows us to streamline the design, start some construction while we're continuing with some, some of the rezoning, conditional zoning stuff with, with the town to meet their new ordinances and all, all of that. We may have, have to play, play, play some, we may have to put some sports teams on some town fields and use those as like some logistical temporary parking. So, it's going to be a phased process. It's not, not going to be easy. But there's also additional athletic buildings, press boxes, concession stands, stands and stuff that we, we can't, we can't build a new school and leave, leave that. So, no stone will be left, left unturned is our goal. So, that is the current situation of the Clayton High School study. And we are, as Ms. Andrews said, we're looking to get started on the design and process. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, comments?
What, so this building, it's only had about a seventy-five year lifespan. What, what is anticipated for a new structure? It seems like, it should be a little longer than that.
Well, industry standard is fifty to sixty years, but schools, schools especially get, get pushed well beyond that. So, but it, it will, will be constructed of the same timeless materials of structural steel and concrete and brick facade masonry.
Okay. Yeah, and I think some, as with this delivery method, which I think is, we can all say has shown to be very productive in speeding things up and builds, that they're looking at the, the lifecycle modeling of buildings. And I know we've had some here participate in the capital budget, and some coming up. But I think that we will see better maintenance than in the last seventy-five years on our, on our buildings. And so, I think that will hopefully prolong that. I don't know if we get another seventy-five, but, but I think that's an additional thing that the, the schools are doing, is looking into that asset management and lifecycle modeling.
So, when will the design start for what the new school would look like?
Bar, bar an approval right, right away.
Okay.
You know, I was in the first junior class at North Johnston. I still refer to it as the new school. That was sixty-one years ago.
Well, another reason we have to build new as opposed to run them out for seventy-five plus years is they become functionally obsolete in terms of meeting the programaticities. So, you know, the new school will give us a lot of flexibility to, to adapt to changes in the education system.
I was part of the newest building on that campus, and that was the freshman academy. So, and that, well, well-lived it too.
One thing that we, we, we have, don't go far, one thing at Clayton High School is how many exits, we have over a hundred doors. It's hard to secure a school that has a hundred outside doors. So, I mean, when you add on to schools, and you start doing all this, you start having a lot of doors. So, safety is a big issue.
Yeah. If we get seventy-five years out of the new one, I will not be concerned about the replacement.
I won't be worried about it.
I won't be worried about it.
Yeah. So, I'm just going to comment that I, I will say thank you for allowing three of the commissioners to sit on that design build selection process. I think four really good design build teams, so it couldn't go wrong. So, we trust y'all make that good decision, and got a lot of good options come next Tuesday.
Well, we'll be sure to, to share with you when we get the design, and we sort of get it down to what we think and how we want to be. Because you, there'll be a lot of stakeholders, of which, I was glad to hear you say that those individuals of the schools are the people that we want to help make these decisions, because they're the ones working in those schools. But we'd love to come back with y'all and share what we have, so you know. But we just appreciate it so very much. Thirty-seven thousand students and five thousand employees say thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I want to say something real quick. So, we'll work with the school system behind the scenes on this project that'll be massive. And when you get numbers that we can talk about behind the scenes, we're going to be back to with a reimbursement resolution on this. Okay?
All right.
That's going to be important.
Okay.
Because this is going to be a long project, and we're going to need to make sure we, if we, in case we have to do something we did last meeting, we got it in place.
Yeah, and I imagine with the schedule they just described, that'll probably be pretty quick.
Yep.
When they come back.
Yep.
For that. Okay. All right. All right. We will move on to the next item, which I was about to skip one here, which is our appointments. And as we did, made the motion to move the planning board, we will have four positions open, and we have ten applicants for those. We each have a ballot at our seats that when you complete that, sign it, turn it in. And then, our clerk and deputy clerk will tally those, and we will make that announcement at the six o'clock meeting, the first thing up on that. I would just, and I want to thank the folks who did apply, Jenny Harless, Jean Castanave, Diavmont Sanders, Clayton Roberts, Mark Lane, Karen Tremblay, Susan Weaver Ford, Tim Little, Debbie Howard, couldn't read my own writing, and Freddie Hudson for, for being willing to apply for that position. So, we will make that announcement at our six o'clock meeting. Next, we have the delinquent tax report. They're Johnston over there. So, Johnston, you come forward, our tax administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you use the December collection report, shows you where we were on twelve twenty-three, or let's try that again, twelve thirty-one. But I want to say that the last day to timely pay was January sixth. And you don't have that information yet, but it showed that we ended that day, which was the timely collection season, at ninety-one point nine seven percent. So, you can see those last six days were extremely busy. And, you know, those were, again, the citizens of Johnston County coming forward and paying their taxes as, you know, they knew they were supposed to do. So, don't know where we are yet for the end of January, but today, we're mailing about ten thousand delinquent notices as a friendly reminder to all those who have not paid their twenty-four taxes that that needs to be paid here soon. Any question about that? I want to give you a quick update about where we are on revow. As I'm sure many are aware, we're in the, in that season. We sent out notices, and they were received by property owners in early January, and we began the appeal process almost immediately. Informal appeals can still be filed. We have one more week, February tenth, which is a week from today, is the last day to file an informal appeal. And there are three ways, as a reminder, there are three ways for people to apply. One is online, either on our website, and there's an appeal button. You just go there and click that, and then provide the information, upload any documents you might have. That website is johnstonnc.gov/tax. Or you can print an appeal form from our website, and either mail it or hand deliver it to our office. We've been mailing those to folks that call in, reminding my staff to remind those who are calling in that we can mail them today, but I can't care and do one that'll get them. So, I encourage people to either come get it, or print their own, or submit online. Or, of course, the other way to do it is to call our office and make an appointment to meet face, face with an appraiser. That number is nine one nine nine eight nine five one three zero, and then follow the prompts that get you to speak with somebody to schedule an appointment. As of this morning, we have received over twenty-five hundred appeals. The online portion, or the online way to appeal is the preferred method at this point. Staff is assisting as we're able. In the month of January, to over eight thousand phone calls. And we heard more than eleven hundred face-to-face appeals. So, it's been a good option for many, and we're still doing that. We still have days left. And just to clarify, even though the last day to appeal is February tenth, doesn't mean that you have to have your face, face appointment done by February tenth. We will be scheduling appointments for a few days after that as well. We want people to be, if they want to be heard and they have information, we want to make sure that happens. Just as a point of clarification, we will be notifying those who have appealed property values of our decision. It doesn't matter how they appeal it, whether it's on paper, online, face-to-face, we will notify all people at the same time in writing. We will be mailing out, they're called decision notices, letters of decision. We will be sending those out. Our goal is to have those out by the end of March. We will send them all at the same time. And then, at that point, you know, then we'll talk about other options. And again, just as a reminder, the last day to informally appeal is a week from today. I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions?
I have a question. I don't want to get too much in the weeds on this, but I know there's people out there that are curious about this type of thing. When it comes to an appeal process, if a person has gotten word from the tax office that this vacant land they have is a good home site, and it's worth forty thousand dollars, but they come and say, look, that land's underwater. I can't get a, I can't get a septic tank permit. How much detail does that person have to go through to get relief, or to get some consideration from, through the appeals process? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, like I mentioned several times in January, at the January meeting, this is mass appraisal. We're not going each little piece of property to determine what, you know, what, whether it perks, what the hydro, what the soil's like, you know, all that. We're doing the best we can. We will miss some. Okay? So, this is the opportunity. If the landowner, the property owner is aware of that, they need to let us know. Okay? If they have information, if they've gotten something that says that they can't build there because it doesn't perk, or for whatever else reason, then they need to provide us a copy of that. Obviously, we have ways to look at soils and that, make determinations whether it's totally wet, you know, that kind of thing. But as much information as the property owner can provide, the faster and easier that we can resolve that matter.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Now, and this is not for you really, but it may be for our PIO staff and our manager. Can we just make sure that we get this on all the platforms we have? With our website, sunshine, social media, that the deadlines and schedules for all this, to make sure everybody understands and doesn't miss it. I know that we're not going to catch everybody, but at least make it so that we've got it out there as many places that we can have it, so people know that schedule.
And let me, let me give a little more information at this point. This is informal appeals. We have a board, Board of Equalization and Review, that will hear formal appeals. And once we send these letters out to property owners, if they still do not agree, then they have an opportunity to, to appeal formally to that board. And then, you know, we take another look. But at the end of the day, it's that board's determination as to what the value is.
And you still have some vacancies on that board?
I have two vacancies.
Two vacancies. So, if you're, if you're out there.
Yes, yes. So, we would love for individuals that might be interested to let, let the Board of Commissioners know that they are interested in that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have manager reports and comments. Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Good morning.
Wanted to just update you on broadband. You know, originally, back with, after COVID or during COVID, there was a lot of broadband grant money coming down from Washington to the states to get out to counties. And we had the great grant process, which Bright Speed got the agreement to do the work in Johnston County. They were selected by the state. And then, so now, the second roll of money is called a cab grant. They've already done one phase of these cab grants. It's really about the same thing. At the first phase of the cab grants, there was a county match required of about thirty percent. And since then, the state has removed the local match. So, we're in the queue now for this broadband, additional broadband project. And so, the state has sent out information to interested companies that may be, companies that may be interested in doing these projects all over North Carolina. And then, the state will select who does Johnston County, but they'll be communicating with Johnston County. So, the question came up is, you know, how much, how much involvement did the state, does Johnston County want to have in that process? Because again, it would be a selection by the state, NC DIT. There were three options. One is no involvement at all. I don't really like that option myself, just personal feelings. The second one was, they do their work, and then they communicate back with us. If there's things that we see there that we have issues with, and certainly be communicating with the board, then they would certainly, if they told us, they would take that into consideration. The third option is us involved in all the technical aspects of it. And, you know, we really don't have a broadband specialist on staff, even though I am going to talk to our, our tech services folks. Jeff Howard's got some experience in it. But I'll come back to the next board meeting with a solid recommendation on that. Just want to share that as we move toward in that cab process. I think very soon, there'll be a vendor for Johnston County, but I wanted to share those options of involvement, and get your feedback, and come back in two weeks. So...
All right. Sounds like good news.
I'm excited about it. And I'm excited about it, the fact that the state waived that local match, which can be significant dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. That brings us to board reports and comments. And Commissioner Davis, I'm going to start with you, with you on the spot first.
Yeah. The only thing I've got is, I appreciate everybody that, with their flexibility of having to move the agendas around from the January meeting. I know with the snow and everything, we had to move some things around. So, just appreciate everybody that had to move things around for, to get things done today.
All right. Mr. Stovall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item this morning. It, it's in regards to Johnston County 4-H target sports or shooting sports program. This has been, we've had a program placed now for, since two thousand and two, and it's become partly the most popular 4-H program that, not only in the state, but in the nation. And we've had to limit growth in this club the last several years, because quite frankly, we don't have the time and space as we're presently set up to accommodate all of the kids who want to participate in it. Now, we've had, we shoot our archery out at the county lands off two-ten, near the landfill. And we have been shooting our firearm portions, which involves rimfire, and muzzle loaders, and shotguns to target clays at a commercial ranch down in Hardin County that has donated three hours, one Saturday a month for that purpose. We have found now that we need more time. We need more space to do that. We have found now that we need more time, we need more space to do that, and I have talked to manager Rick Hester and other members of the board about looking at adapting our archery range to also allow us to accommodate the firearm portions of this program. And again, I think this is a very worthwhile opportunity. I know that there's also a a need or demand for a public shooting range in this county. That's much further down the road, but I think that's something we need to look at because Johnston County is a, is known to be a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. But in the case of four H program, we're teaching safety, we're teaching citizenship, and we're teaching learning by doing. And I'm near and dear to this program because I've been an instructor in it for over twenty years. So I've seen the advantages it brings to use. I look forward to working with county staff, and hopefully we could open up the participation availability by looking at moving our firearm portions to that county property.
All right. Any issues with staff going ahead and proceeding on with that from the rest of the board?
I fully support it.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. I know that's something that I had mentioned, didn't have the expertise, understanding, or the passion to move that forward, so I appreciate you taking that and moving it forward. Like I said, that's much needed, heard about it for several years of needing a better facility that's in our county, and I agree that the public space is is needed and will look for that, you know, at some point down the road.
All right. Well, I appreciate the support of the fellow board members in in moving forward and evaluating this situation, hopefully bringing it to reality.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
You know, during public comment, we don't typically respond, and we didn't today, but Ms. Harris here and Dr. Blackwell came and talked about new charter, and heretofore, we haven't had any involvement in that because we couldn't. But the the rules have changed, and I know we've kicked it around, but I think we ought to have some kind of discussion, at least given these ladies a response at this point. Maybe the response is we're not ready to give a response, but I think we ought to address it one way or the other, up or down. And I know we've talked about the positives of it. Obviously, the results of the school's been very good, but there's a, there's a whole lot of other elements that come into play here that might affect how we deal with this approach.
Yes, I know that as as far as Johnston County public schools, we're obligated by law to fund the construction, and we, the current legislation and I guess law is that for charter schools that we may fund those. So there's the little caveat in there that's that's different.
You're probably going to talk about our work session on the twentieth and the twenty-first, maybe we can come to some final conclusion at that point.
Yeah, and I don't mind if we if we want to, if we do want to add some discussion even before that on the sixteenth or seventeenth, thank you, yeah. The seventeenth, go ahead and just put that on the agenda for for discussion, if that's acceptable to the rest of the board. Okay. All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stevens?
Oh, you skipped around.
I tried to give you a heads up when I pointed over that.
You did, sorry, sorry. Well, I was going to piggyback on what he said, just that, you know, I hope it never gets taken that we are not responding. Sometimes it's it's a matter of there's seven different differing opinions, and we don't have a response yet that we can all agree on to be made public, I think, in several in several areas. But I had a couple of things. For one, I just want to say, I don't know about y'all, but the windows being open has made the biggest difference. I don't know who made that decision, but if we could vote to have the windows open all the time, that would be great. It just doesn't.
We'll just do, we just do that when you request, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I was wondering if it had an effect on the camera angles, if it's good or bad.
A little bit, we'll talk about it. Again, we have to have everybody's opinion before we can make a decision. One other thing I wanted to note, you know, it's really important to me when I first came on this board, that being a parent who had a child in the school system, I, when school bonds would come up, when we had to vote on him, I always kind of felt like, what happened with the money that that was voted on before? And it was very important to me to understand the why behind that, and it's just so great to see the Board of Education get up this morning, not only are we having those open conversations and the transparency is that now we are a part of those conversations from the concept until the build. And I just really applaud the board on our working with relationship with the Board of Education. We heard a lot when we were at our conference a couple of weeks ago how vital that is to have a highly functioning and and operating county, that those two boards work in hand, and we heard so many horror stories, and we were just grateful for the working relationships that we had. One other thing I wanted to note coming out of our district, very excited about for those watching, tonight on The Voice, it premieres, and one of our own Johnston County residents will be on The Voice. He's a former Johnston County sheriff, and I'm just really excited for Robert Hunter and his family. So we don't know if tonight will be his audition, but just wanted to put that out there for one of our fellow residents.
That's awesome. All right. Christian Rose?
Okay, a couple things, back on the school budget revision that we were requested about. I just wanted to reiterate that that was coming basically in advance from a bond that was already voted on. It wasn't as if we just allocated willy-nilly thirty million dollars that wasn't already planned on. So there was kind of a difference there. I just want to make sure everybody knew that was that was a big difference. And then the other thing, when Rick was talking about the broadband, I did want to hope, hope that not only can we allow, or if we're involved in picking who who gets this, it's not a company who is just going to lay fiber, hook people up, and then leave, because I did have an experience with our current fiber provider, and I signed up excited that I could get this service, and as soon as I had a problem, I was on my own, there was no response. Five days to get any kind of something to happen, and a business, I can't be down five days. So I hope that that's part of the discussion, not just running fiber, but actually sticking with the customers afterwards. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chairman Harris?
Yes, sir, just briefly, you know, a little bit more on the school board relationship. I will say I'm very thankful for that relationship as well. It has not always been that way. And so the level of transparency and the level of working together as two boards has is really, it's reached new levels, it really has, and I'm thankful for that opportunity as well. Lot going on in the county, there's a lot of good things happening. We're still working on the possibilities of a behavioral health urgent care. You'll hear some more about that as time goes on, and hopefully as we get closer to establishing a budget for the next year, that there'll be some funding included in that. There's, there's just, it's a good opportunity to address some of the needs, there's going to be more after that. But there's been a lot of work has gone into that, and I'm excited about the progress that we've made, and hopefully we'll be able to see something on the ground where people can get the help that they need.
Thank you. All right, and a couple things from me. One is the renaming of NC forty-two thirty-six to Veterans Boulevard. There has, I don't know if all the signs have been put up yet or they have, okay?
There's a couple of huge ones that have still.
Okay, so a few more to go, but I think, and I Googled something yesterday, a location of a business, and it said Veterans Boulevard on there, so I thought we we kind of moved a long way from now that it's actually on Google when you search it on there. The the next thing is board assignments. We've circulated that to all the boards, and thank you for taking a look at that, and thank you for your willingness to be on those boards and serve those. So we will get that out to the organizations, and I guess we'll get that on our website too, what the board assignments and on that are. But again, thank you for for helping get that done. And then finally, our work session, strategic planning work session, is February the twentieth and the twenty-first. It will take place at the Workforce Development Center in Clayton this year, and we will start the both sessions at nine o'clock. We'll go a little longer, maybe to four or so on four-thirty on the Thursday, the twentieth, and then on Friday, probably till three or something like that. So just make know they will be live streamed, as has been customary for us. So that is all that I have. Any last minute before it popped in somebody's head? All right. I don't think we have a need for a closed session, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.